Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
Counselor Capelowitz.
Second Counselor Van Buren, please call the roll.
Counselor Capelowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Unright? Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd? Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The motion passes six zero one.
Thank you, the public hearing is adjourned. The public session will begin in about five minutes. Good evening again. It is now seven fifteen, it's a public session. No one has signed up to make any comments in the public session. Is there anyone here who would like to address the Assembly? Anyone? Who else? Okay, all right, we'll all adjourn the public session. The regular meeting will begin at seven thirty. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance by the United States of America and to the Republic which stands the nation, God, God, freedom, liberty, justice. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
His Honor, the Mayor?
Here.
Counselor Unright?
He's excused.
Counselor Myers?
Here.
Counselor Todd?
Here.
Counselor Walker?
Here.
Counselor Barlow?
Here.
Counselor Van Buren?
Here.
Counselor Capelowitz?
Here.
We have six present with one excused.
Thank you. Under the Mayor's report, start out with a sad moment. I'm going to ask for a moment of silence for two of our former city employees who recently passed away. The first was Patrick McMahon, he passed away on October the fifteenth of 2014. He had been employed with the City of Oswego's Department of Public Works for many years. And also Barbara A. Donahue, who passed away on October twenty-fourth of 2014. She served as Counselor for the City of Oswego's Second Ward in 2000, 2007. She also worked at the DPW in her traffic department. And our sympathy is extended to their families and to very many friends, they will be missed. So if we can observe a moment of silence, please. I do have a proclamation to read. This is regarding the Extra Mile Day, 2014, November the first. There's no one here to accept the proclamation, but I will read it. Whereas the Swigga, New York, is a community which acknowledges that a very special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas the Swigga, New York, is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving them themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas the Swigga, New York, is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas the Swigga, New York, acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 500 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November the first, 2014. Now therefore, I, Thomas W. Gillen, Mayor of the City of Oswego, New York, do hereby proclaim November the first, 2014, to be Extra Mile Day. And I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day, to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, their families, community, country, or world a better place. And on that note, I'd really like to say a special thanks to the volunteers of Oswego this past weekend and some of the community work they did. Fitzhugh Park under the leadership of Counselor Myers and the volunteers that he got to help out, it was remarkable. And one day they opened up that park. Washington Square Park with our city planner, Amy Birdsall, working with the DPW going the extra mile. Volunteers from all of the city and the community. And I think it says a lot about community because we're a community that cares about children. In fact, we dropped everything on the weekend to make it safe for our children. Says a lot about our community. I'm very proud and I want to thank everybody who participated in that. Does any of the Counselors have any reports? Yes?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd also like to say thank you to everybody who gave up their weekend to come to Fitzhugh Park. Great turnout, great success. I'd just like to say thank you all then. And again, thank you to this Council for authorizing the money for the material. Thank you, gentlemen.
Any other comments? Yes, Counselor Van Buren?
Thank you. I just wanted to, along the same lines, say thank you to Novellus for funding the project at Washington Square. And thank you to the DPW, Artson Rep Group, Mr. Smith, and Amy Birdsall, as well as the ORA members of Allstate for the facility grant. It was a huge success with a lot of volunteers making some really awesome choices.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, please call Resolution four fifty-four.
Resolution four fifty-four would approve the minutes of the common council meeting held October fourteenth, 2014.
Counselor Capelowitz, Counselor Van Buren? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Capelowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd? Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four fifty-five.
Resolution four fifty-five would approve the minutes of the special common council meeting held October twenty-third, 2014.
Counselor Myers? Counselor Walker? Is there any discussion?
Counselor Capelowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd? Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four fifty-six.
Resolution four fifty-six would appoint Theodore Peniatoff, Commissioner of Deeds.
Counselor Walker, Counselor Van Buren? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Capelowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd? Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four fifty-seven.
Resolution four fifty-seven would approve the use of public space at the request of William Joyce, owner of property located at 23 West Fourth Street, in order to install a one-car parking area.
Counselor Barlow? Counselor Walker? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Capelowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
(coughs)
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four fifty-eight.
Resolution four fifty-eight would approve the use of public space at the request of William Joyce, owner of property located at 25 through 27 West Fourth Street, in order to install a two-car parking area.
Counselor Capelitz, Counselor Barlow? Any discussion?
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four fifty-nine.
Resolution four fifty-nine would approve proposed local law number three of the year 2014, a local law amending Chapter 108, electrical standards of the Code of the City of New York.
Counselor Van Buren, Counselor Capelitz? Any discussion? Counselor Capelitz?
Yes, Your Honor, I would just say that based on what I think has been some very good discussion over the last several weeks on this particular proposal and certainly hard work by many Counselors here communicating with the state of New York, our staff here, and many constituents that are going to be affected and impacted by this, I think we've come to what I hope will be a rational decision regarding this particular proposal. There may be other ways to attack this without, in my mind, adding further regulation where we really don't need to be right now. We want to maintain ourselves, the business friendly community, and I think this, I know on this today, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Mr. Van Buren?
I think we've also had some good discussion about this with residents and state officials and our code staff. I think one of the things that I would like to see moving forward is some public workshops regarding what's happening with our code enforcement and our building permit system. I think it's important that contractors in the area as well as the local residents, business owners, have a chance to come in and sit down and talk with what is inspiring in this whole restructuring process. And I think that would get us to a better level of understanding of what is driving the economy.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Capelitz?
No.
Counselor Myers?
No.
Counselor Todd?
No.
Counselor Walker?
No.
Counselor Barlow?
No.
Counselor Van Buren?
No.
The resolution is defeated, zero to six.
Please call Resolution four sixty.
Resolution four sixty would authorize a public hearing regarding local law number four of the year 2014, a local law amending Chapter 63, animals, of the Code of the City of New York.
Mr. Myers, Counselor Van Buren? Any discussion? Counselor Van Buren?
Just like to thank our animal control officer. I know this has been a concern for many residents with some of the issues that we've had with the animals in the area, and I think this is a good step in expanding on some of the definitions in how we handle these animals.
Counselor Capelitz?
Essentially the same thing, I just wanted to thank our animal control officer, and I certainly appreciate all the extra effort that she's putting into really putting together a first-rate, I want to say, facility for our animals to be housed in. And we know that a couple times, and I know she's been, has looked at any and every opportunity we can to improve that, maybe a little volunteer, we've had a lot of people grabbing sixty or seventy volunteers to help with the animal control center, but I just wanted to thank her.
Counselor Barlow?
Repeat what I said during committee, and that's, that this, the need for this law was really apparent because of an incident that happened in my ward. The incident was the same dog attack, two different animals, wasn't provoked by any means, and actually severely injured an animal and a pedestrian walking the animal. So this law really just gives our animal control officer more discretion and allows her to actually take a step to make our neighborhood safer regarding vicious or dangerous animals. And I'll just repeat one more time, it does not discriminate against any breed of dog. So, and thank you to our animal control officer again. I appreciate this, and I know that the victims in my neighborhood are very, very grateful for another step of added protection. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four sixty-one.
Resolution four sixty-one would authorize the mayor to sign change order number one with J.R., John R. Dudley Construction Company for project modifications to the Charles E. Riley Booster Pump Station project.
Counselor Van Buren? Counselor Walker? Any discussion?
Just like to thank the residents for their patience with this work being done. You know, the roads have been torn up, they've dealt with us installing new check wells and vault chambers, and I appreciate their patience while we do this much needed project.
Any other comments?
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four sixty-two.
Resolution four sixty-two would authorize the mayor to sign contract documents for the continued audit services of Chiachi, Dietrich, Shagen, Little, and Nicholson and Company LLC for fiscal years 2015 through 2017.
Counselor Capelitz? Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four sixty-three.
Resolution four sixty-three would authorize the City Chamberlain to sign continuation agreements with the current healthcare providers for the year 2015.
Counselor Van Buren? Counselor Myers? Any discussion?
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four sixty-four.
Resolution four sixty-four would authorize the City Chamberlain to complete budget amendments for the insurance reimbursements.
Counselor Capelitz? Counselor Van Buren? Is there any discussion?
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four sixty-five.
Resolution four sixty-five would authorize the City Chamberlain to complete current and future budget amendments for payroll, deeds, and towing.
Myers, Counselor Barlow? Any discussion?
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four sixty-six.
Resolution four sixty-six would approve a transfer of funds from the debt contingent account to the debt service and band principal accounts.
Counselor Capelitz, Counselor Van Buren? Any discussion?
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four sixty-seven.
Resolution four sixty-seven would approve a transfer of funds from the contingent account to the Department of Public Works' snow removal account.
Counselor Walker? Counselor Myers? Any discussion?
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four sixty-eight.
Resolution four sixty-eight would approve a transfer of funds from within the Department of Public Works.
Counselor Van Buren? Counselor Capelitz? Any discussion? Yes, Counselor?
I have one question, I don't know who can answer this. Do we have records of who uses what fuel, or is it charged to the department that uses it? I know we have the department, I don't know who can answer that.
Well, I do, I do think we keep a separate, that would be the police department, fire department, and the looking tower. Dave, do you want, keep separate the records of the, of what the population of, of the people? Okay, all right. Commissioner?
Commissioner, will you, will you have a second?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? If you're none, please call.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four sixty-nine.
Resolution four sixty-nine would approve a transfer of funds from various departments to the, to the, to the Works' fuel account.
Counselor Myers? Counselor Van Buren? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four seventy.
Resolution four seventy would approve a transfer of funds from within the high dam hydroelectric facility account.
Counselor Capelitz? Counsel Van Buren? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four seventy-one.
Resolution four seventy-one would approve a sale of surplus equipment and vehicles by Auctions International.
Counselor Walker? Counselor Van Buren? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four seventy-two.
Resolution four seventy-two would approve attendance at the school arrest diversion workshop to be held November twelfth and thirteenth, 2014, in Albany, New York, at the request of Toriel D. Care Police Chief.
Counselor Barlow? Counselor Todd? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four seventy-three.
Resolution four seventy-three would waive the rules of the common council to present resolutions number four seventy-four through four seventy-six C. from the floor without committee consideration.
Counselor Capelitz? Counselor Van Buren? Please call the roll.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four seventy-four.
Resolution four seventy-four would authorize the city attorney to obtain a property survey and appraisal of the easterly half of Whitney Street.
Counselor Capelitz and Counselor Myers? Any discussion?
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four seventy-five.
Resolution four seventy-five is the motion to rescind Resolution number three seventy-eight dated September eighth, 2014.
Counselor Capelitz? Counselor Van Buren? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four seventy-six.
Resolution four seventy-six would authorize the mayor to sign change order number four with WD Malone Trucking and Excavating Incorporated for project modifications to the combined sewer rehabilitation, first twenty-five percent project.
Counselor Capelitz? Counselor Myers? Is there any discussion? Counselor Capelitz?
Yes, Your Honor, this comes as a waiver, and the reason for the waiver is that they just completed the reconstruction of the combined sewer and water part of the project that was, was to change doors and the water lines there. And we have a street that's in pretty poor condition, we have some buying to put on that before plants closed and while it was still getting added, so that's why this is introduced as a waiver tonight, and I appreciate the support of the Council, certainly the residents of here, it's a great thing to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, please call.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four seventy-six.
Resolution four seventy-six A. would approve appointment of Emre Tickle as Personnel Director for an additional six-year term.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution four seventy-six.
Resolution four seventy would authorize the mayor to notify Erie Boulevard Hydropower LP that the city will not terminate the enforcement authorization agreement in thirty days and further extend said agreement through January thirty-first, twenty fifteen.
Counselor Capelitz? Counselor Van Buren? Any discussion? Counselor Capelitz?
Yeah, I'm sure this is several of us chiming in here. This is, Your Honor, this is, some folks say we may be taking, taking some steps backwards, but it's actually a step forward in that we've had the opportunity, several councils here, Counselor Todd, Van Buren, myself, have had a chance to meet with representatives of Brookfield and have a, a very thoughtful discussion about what's transpired over the last several years in our community as it relates to that agreement that was previously put in place and especially the hardships placed on our community with sirens and also importantly, the, the impact that it's had on our tourism industry, especially our fishery. And I wanted to thank Councilor Todd for, sometimes folks say he can be a little bit abrasive and maybe a little tough in the way he approaches things, but it was in a matter of days that after that resolution passed to rescind this resolution that we were all sitting at the table having a discussion. So, and I know we've all been trying very hard over the last several months, actually probably years, to sit down and have a, a meaningful discussion about the impacts of this agreement. We do have commitments from Brookfield and we have actually begun discussions on a next iteration of, of an agreement. The reason why we're, we're reinstating this through the end of January of two thousand fifteen is because of public safety agreements between Brookfield and the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and commitments that they have to have in place in order to run that facility. And this allows us to bridge that gap in between now and when we have a new agreement. There are several issues that are still to be worked out in that agreement, but I can tell you, and I think most folks, my phone hasn't rung at all over the last month as it relates to the sirens. And I know they've certainly have turned them down a notch or at least redirected and done some other work. And they're still looking at, at other options and opportunities for creating less of noise pollution on our river. We still have some issues that still have to be worked out. Sure, Counselor Todd's going to talk a little bit about the man with the bullhorn and what that does to our fishery and the impact. But I think there's a lot of work that, instructive work that's being done in this agreement and I hope we have the support of the council.
Counselor Todd?
Although I agree with Counselor Capelitz that they, Brookfield has done a lot of good things in the last three weeks to try and mitigate a lot of the problems we've had. The constant sirens that were going off all night long have ceased for the most part. Well, they haven't ceased. They've redirected and changed the tones of them, which has cut down on the noise pollution greatly. They've made commitments to work with us on bringing the fishing industry back. They've changed some of the positioning on how people are allowed to fish in there and are trying to work with us in the future on trying to develop some other avenues on how people will be able to fish there in the coming years. And that'll be a cooperative effort with us and the state on trying to implement some of those things. Again, as Counselor Capelitz just alluded to, one of the contingencies that I was adamant about was that by doing some of the things that we're agreeing to do, that once their sirens are allowed to continue and they're allowed to continue to post certain areas, that once we gave them all that ability to do that and they did all that, then it becomes a matter that it's on the people that are violating that, that we don't, they don't have any enforcement authority once we posted the sirens. To continue to have an individual with a bullhorn down there harassing people in the river, once they make a personal choice to not get out of the river, continues to be a problem down there, both fishermen and the people that live in those areas. I can support this, but I want a contingent on guy with a bullhorn that sits out there and harasses people all day, that it ceases immediately, or I can't support it. The guy with bullhorn has to go. Non-negotiable for me. He doesn't have a right to sit up there and harass people. People are making a personal choice on where they go. The liability's gone for them. They don't control the river bottom. We do. So whatever decision they have with FERC and agreement they have with FERC and Brookfield is between FERC and Brookfield. The economy issue that comes out of it on how they disrupt and disturb our fishing industry becomes our issue because it's tax revenue that comes in. So whatever agreement they have with FERC is their problem. I don't care about their agreements with them. I don't care what their responsibilities are with them. They have to work those out. But to destroy an industry and continue to harass an industry where people come in here and stay in our hotels and shop in our stores and go into our gas stations and buy at our restaurants, that's an issue that we're responsible for. And if they're going to continue to dissuade people from coming here by harassing them once they've made a decision, I still can't support this. If they're willing to get rid of the fishermen, or the bullhorn, I can support this because I believe they're trying to work with us. But their problems with FERC are their problems. They're not ours. And I really don't care what their problems are with FERC because they're their problems with FERC. They made those agreements that they shouldn't have. They don't get to harass the people that are in the river doing it, making personal choices. So if Brookfield's willing to get rid of the guy with the bullhorn, we're unhappy to agree with this. It was a condition that I sat, when I sat down with them, and they did agree to sit with us and we're pretty good about trying to help us with this. It took us three years, but they're pretty good about trying to help us. But the guy with the bullhorn's got to go.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Counselor Van Buren?
I'll be supporting this. I, I will be supporting it because the document that we will get at the end of this is not the same document that was put in place. They have committed to give us a different one. I have seen them make good on many of the changes that we asked for. I believe that they're making an honest effort to change how they're handling the river and their enforcement of it. I agree with Counselor Todd that I think the, the bullhorn is an issue. I think it's always going to be an issue that we have high hazard zones and there's going to be people that choose to exploit that area. That was an agreement we had to give them to enforce the high hazard zones. They've agreed to change them with this new agreement. And I think that could be a possible solution in alleviating some of the problems. I have no problem working with Counselor Todd to address those issues if he wants some kind of caveat, but I do support this and hope that the rest of the council does as well.
Any comments?
Yes, if I may, and I just respond and react to Counselor Todd's concern here. And I do know that it's probably none of our business, the agreement between Brookfield and FERC, but it's their license to operate. And, and I, I think that the issue is, is one that we need to keep right on the forefront, and that is, in the next iteration of this agreement, that that issue be addressed and that if it even is negotiated process between Brookfield and FERC, I think there's, you know, it's an opportunity for us to, to make it a lot more user-friendly as far as the fishery is concerned. The one other part of the agreement, in, in the new agreement, that, that was really missing in this one was an evaluation period, a continual evaluation period and a requirement that we sit down, and it looks like at this point, maybe every six months, to talk about how the agreement is impacting this city, its fishery and, and its citizens. And that was never in the agreement. And that's kind of why we, you know, kind of, some of it fell on deaf ears. So we're trying to help people in here and the bullhorn is one of them. And personally, we need to sit down and talk on a regular basis about, you know, how this public safety agreement is supposed to work and the consequences intended and unintended. It still may be others. But I do know that as a part of that also, the fishery and the promotion of the fishery and providing a, a safe public access for our fishery is, is around that agreement in our next agreement.
Counselor Todd?
I don't disagree with any of those. And I agree that this year's fishing season, for all intents and purposes, is just about over and it's lost. And I'm willing to vote and put this through with a commitment that at our next meeting in January, that for next fishing season, we have some clear understanding of how this is going to be done and what enforcement ability that they have, so that they've got plenty of time to, to negotiate with FERC. But that bullhorn and the harassment of the fishermen that's keeping them from coming here goes away. Once we give them the ability to keep the sirens and their ability to post those high danger areas, once they've done all that, I think they fulfill their obligation to the public safety and to FERC. And if somebody makes a decision to go in there into areas that they've been told not to go in, I don't believe there's any liability on behalf of Brookfield. So for the other people trying to live in those areas and trying to enjoy the fishing down there, I don't believe they need to be harassed on what becomes a personal choice of stupidity to go in and continue to fish in an area with water coming over their head. So if there's a commitment that we're going to address this in January, I'll vote for